For the special meeting Thursday, March 23rd, the order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Welcome all, and Sue, will you please call and hold?
Commissioner Kamalder?
Here.
Commissioner Chambers?
Here.
Commissioners Zanstron?
Here.
Commissioner Gerard?
Here.
Commissioner Salzweil?
Here.
Commissioner Tielander?
Here.
And Chair Barker?
Here.
Thank you, Sue. The approval of the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
And discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the stand's approved, and is there any public comments on the agenda before we get started? Thank you. We have no more business, and the new business is Rhonda Tire, Special Land Use and Site Plan Review. If we could have Dan Rhonda, and/or Neil Baumann, or both, you're more than welcome if we can have one of you come on up. Just tell us in your words what you want to do, I guess. Start off there.
Right, so much more than tires. I'm Neil Baumann, I'm president of the Design Forum Architects, we're the architect of property for the project. Basically, we're going to take the property and develop a new service center, it's about 10,000 square feet, plus or minus. Six hoists, plus a couple of alignment racks and oil change area, new offices, break room, and a service storage mezzanine, both the office and break room areas. It will be at least partially heated by recycled oil, so we're doing our part to be sustainable. Added additional insulation in the structure. It will have a nice front entry with Mason or Collins, and a canopy entrance, balanced buildings, pre-engineered metal building. Parking lot for 31, I was a little confused by one of the items that's on the list there, talked about amending our site plan to show deferred parking to meet the zoning ordinance, but I think that we showing up parking to meet the ordinance unless we're misunderstanding the ordinance. So, we'll have a conversation about that.
Thank you.
Okay?
Sure. Danny, is Dan here?
Yeah. I'm Dean Rhonda, Rhonda Auto Centers. I've been excited to be out in Lowell for all these years, and been promising our employees to develop a place that we can serve the community better. Last time we built something was in 1962, downtown Grand Rapids, and we got bumped out of the city, so. Love being in Lowell, helping the customers, and we have a great staff, all living in Lowell. Appreciate it, any questions?
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of either Dan or Neil before we actually get started here? Okay. Having said that, Andy, will you go over and lead us through the discussion here?
Yeah, thank you. This, as you guys know, is a special land use within the light industrial zoning district. There are two parcels that are right next to each other that are zoned lightly here, which is a little unusual, this is one of the few vacant parcels left in this area. So, we're obviously happy to see it get developed. Just to walk through some of the site plan items pretty quick, it needs all the dimensional standards setbacks and things like that. As far as site lighting goes, they have three light poles for the parking area on there, and the site plan indicates that it would be cut off down to facing lights, which is what the ordinance wants. You know, we would also like to see just like a cut sheet or something that shows the type of, the style of light that would be proposed. And fixtures, the poles themselves with the fixtures on, you can't exceed 20 feet in height, so that's just something to note, I don't have any concern with that. With regard to parking, the zoning ordinance requires one space for each 800 square feet of gross court area, plus three spaces for each service stall, which our math turns out to 39 parking spaces. They have shown 31 on the site plan, so they're short, there is 39 people excessive to meet, but nevertheless, that is what the ordinance says.
Andy, just to break in for a second here, as I understood it, Neil, I think indicated six stalls plus three other paves of some sort?
There are, yeah, there are six service stalls, two alignment racks, and oil change.
Okay, is that considered, is that?
Yeah, I guess our, the way that we interpreted the site plan is, I mean, there's room for nine cars within the building to be worked on at the same time. I think that's what the ordinance is getting at, at least that's what we interpreted it.
Right.
So, to, I don't want them to pave more than they have to, so one way that is within the ordinance to deal with that issue is to set aside some area for what we call deferred parking. So, that would be an area where they wouldn't have to pave it, they wouldn't have to improve it even, just know on the site plan that there are, if they're needed, there would have eight extra parking spaces in some location that, you know, if, if demand ever warranted that, they would be able to then.
Yeah, we're looking in this area back here.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah. Yeah, so that's something that they wouldn't have to, they wouldn't have to build it or pave it or anything at this time, but just show on the site plan that there's, you know, eight additional spaces up here somewhere. And then, after that, they can, they can use the rest of the space as they need it, they could put other stuff there temporarily, we wouldn't let them go to building there, but they're not closing there anyways. So, that's something that they can do just to satisfy the requirements of the ordinance in that case. With landscaping, they required one tree and three shrubs, each 20 feet of lot width. There's 150 feet of frontage, so like in our interpretation of for each 20 feet, which is 20 whole feet, so that requires 21 shrubs and seven trees, and they have 21 shrubs and seven trees, so there's no issues there.
Andy, just before that, the parking lot landscaping?
Mm-hmm. Oh, right, sorry about that. The zoning ordinance also requires one landscape island within the parking lot for each 12 spaces. So, they have 31 spaces, they've got one, they would need a couple more. As with other things, the ordinance does allow flexibility for them to place those, if they don't have the space, or there's not a place within the interior of the lot where they can logically place them, they can place equivalent landscaping someplace else on the site, so if they wanted to do something on the side of the building, maybe, I mean, the front's pretty well landscaped at this point, or they could add in a couple more, and then, of course, they would have to compensate for that with a couple more deferred spaces if they were to do something like that. So, there's, that would be two islands, I think, that they would need to add to satisfy that criteria, actually just one.
Yeah, that'd take up another parking spot, then two.
Right, yeah, so they'd have to do, you know, one more of those, and then add one more deferred space basically on the ordinance side of the property. With regard to signage, so they've proposed, they have proposed a six-foot tall, 32-square-foot ground sign in the front of the building, which is within the ordinance, and is exactly what we want to see. They are allowed to have one sign on the building that faces the street, and also allowed to have one sign on the building that faces the parking lot to the west. Each one of those can be up to 50 square feet, and if I'm calling correctly here, I think they're K, let me go check the drawing here.
On page, page three, page one.
So, south elevation that would face, south, the elevation that would face the street, they'd be able to have one up to 50 square feet, and then the side, on the west side, would be able to have one up to 50 square feet, and then the other two would not be permitted to have any additional wall signs. So, that's something that, it looks like right now they have two on the north elevation, which would be back, and they've got one on the south elevation, which would be the front, you know, the side that faces the street. So, they'd have to consider moving the one on the north elevation to the side, because according to the ordinance, you can't have them in back too, they're supposed to be facing the street or facing the parking lot. And that's something that we can deal with as a condition of approval, if you guys are inclined to approve.
How many signs on the building are they allowed?
One.
We'll start off.
Well, the ordinance says one sign, let me read it here, says one sign, one per building wall facing a public street. So, it says a sign, now, you know, how we interpret that is, I mean, that sign can only say one thing, there's one sign, there's one sign that half of it says from the auto centers, and half of it says Napa Auto Care Center. I think if those are within one continuous, you know, block of sign, I think that would be okay. The one on the north elevation where they're separated, we'd have to consider that two signs. And so, that, that is something that we, if I was to take, we would be able to, or the other one on the south elevation, you know, in the concept, I think it's fine. And they have one on the, you could be square feet max.
I'm assuming they would get the best advertising for their dollar by putting it on the north, as you look at traffic on 21, is why you really would like to see that sign there?
Mm-hmm.
Right, that is on the side.
And we could, we could put them together, actually, I think we'd like to put them up higher anyway, and maybe put it up on the face, and then put them together so they look kind of like the one that's on the front. They're just painted, they're not lighted.
I don't, I mean, unfortunately, there's not any flexibility in the ordinance, it just says one per building wall facing a public street, and I guess the way I would interpret facing a public street is directly facing a public street. Otherwise, every dimension is going to face a public street eventually, might not be for two miles, but there's eventually going to be a public street somewhere. So, I understand the need to have, you know, to want that signage facing Main Street, but I don't think the ordinance allows for that, that kind of flexibility, unfortunately. It says that northern boundary of the lot does not face either their own parking lot, nor does it face.
Can I ask a question? If, if we were to put some parking behind the building, would that change your last comment? That it would be a sign facing the parking lot?
I suppose, I mean, I don't know if there's a minimum, we have to, you know.
Get a number of parking spots?
Yeah, I'd have to make sure that we're not, we don't want to, you know, go around the spirit of the ordinance on, you know, kind of a technicality. We don't fully define parking lot, parking facility. So, that, that might be something that we could look at, I guess. We can, we can deal with that, I'd have to check in a little bit more before, you know, we make a phone call, but, yeah, that is something that we could look at, and that might work if they were to move some parking out of that. And they didn't have the one on the side, they just had one on the, so the same elbow signs, that might be something that we can work with.
So, you're saying that if they have on the front of the building here, they have a sign on the building, right?
Yes.
And they can also, then they could also have one on the back?
Yeah, possibly, if, or only if they were to put a bunch of parking back there.
Yeah.
Or some parking.
What about, what about on this side here? On that side, what about this side?
Well, I suppose they could, I mean, if they haven't proposed that, I mean, I don't want to have, you know, a ton of more signs than we need, I guess, so.
Yeah, I think we'd a lot rather have a sign on the north side if we can find a way to work that out, and then have another one that faces west, if we're already addressing the street pretty well.
Right.
We have to do eight more spots anyways, right? Your side being, yeah.
We could extend the paved area, even though we don't want it paved more than we have to, gain the necessary spots that we're lacking, put in the island that we need, and make the back of the building, which is viewable by our neighbors, much more pleasant to look at. We certainly would do that if that's what you guys want us to do, just to get since that's.
Was it, was it basically with the island, you need eight more spots, if I remember right, so you put eight more back there, or something like that?
Yeah, we're short a spot for landscaping anywhere.
Yeah, right.
So, we'd be more than willing to do that.
And can the trees go back to, yeah, trees back there too to make up for the seven trees?
Right.
Well, there we go.
There you go.
I'm thinking I'll get in the way of your sign. Yeah, 20 years ago.
In 15 years, if it gets in the way of the sign, we'll worry about that.
Then you're dealing with the arbor gorgeous. Will it be an accident? Pink windstorm.
Charlie Brown. And you like the motherfucking, oh!
Yeah, that's right.
We can consider these requirements first, before you go in, or do you want to do the site plan review?
Well, yeah, I mean, so, because we're considering a site plan and a special land use at the same time, approval is kind of twofold, so it's a site plan approval and it's a special land use approval.
Okay, so now just go right on through.
Yeah, I mean, if you want, we can walk through the site plan standards, and then we can kind of stop for a minute if you want, and make sure we're good there, and then we'll move on to the special land use considerations. With, you guys, we've been through this a few times with site plans, so the zoning ordinance contains six standards that we need to consider whenever we're looking at a site plan. I'm not going to read all of these, but I'll sort of summarize what I thought here. The first one just says that uses proposed will not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare. Shall be planned to take into account property size of the property, uses on adjoining property, and the site shall be developed to not impede in normal and orderly development or improvement of surrounding property. You know, generally, I think the site is well-designed, the uses around are reasonably compatible, and, you know, we like that all of the service stalls and all that stuff is taking place fully within a closed building. So, if there were any significant noise concerns, that would be, you know, largely mitigated just by being inside, you know, some of those, some repair shops, tire shops mostly, a lot of times, they have all their doors wide open all the time, and it can get pretty noisy, so, you know, we're pleased to see that that's not the case, and that I don't think they'll have a substantial impact negatively on the surrounding properties. Item B talks about safe, convenient, uncongestion, and well-defined vehicular and pedestrian circulation. You know, again, the parking area, the driveways are all, you know, make sense, the driveway location makes sense. I don't know, Bruce, I know with the previous site plan, you asked them to put a connection from the sidewalk to the front of the building. I thought about that, I mean, this is primarily kind of an auto-centric.
It's an auto center, yeah.
At the same time, if somebody leaves, they're probably there to get work done, maybe they go away for an hour, they walk back, I don't know, I mean, that's, that's up to you. I didn't suggest it in my report, but in the interest of consistency, I guess I thought I would point it out, and you guys can decide if that's something that you'd want to do here.
Commissioners, any thought on that? As far as I'm concerned, it says an auto-related, not walk-up situation.
I thought about it, and the parking lot of front is fairly narrow, and I don't think so.
Right, okay.
Item C talks about the arrangement of public or private vehicular and pedestrian connections to existing or planned streets in the area, only one street in the area. If connected to that, there aren't any of the planned streets, and that's not really applicable for the most part. Item D talks about removal or alteration of significant natural features. There aren't any on the site, the most, I mean, it's flat, it's open, it's vacant, it's actually not within the 100-year flood plain, which surprised me a little bit, I thought it was, because most things down there are, but, you know, we looked at the control maps and everything, and it, it reimagined this around the property quite nicely, so that's, that's not an issue. Item E talks about satisfactory assurance shall be provided that the requirements of other applicable codes and ordinances would be met, which would be a condition of approval, obviously. Item F talks about the general purposes and spirit of the master plan would be maintained. This is a little interesting, the master plan has a very large mixed-use area between Bo's Road and Main Street, it's, it's pretty big, and it's not, it's not entirely clear what exactly is envisioned there. What it says is that it's intended to permit a mixture of residential office and commercial uses, but not necessarily any downtown-style building. You know, given that, I mean, I think this, to me, this is primarily a commercial capable name use, so I think it fits into that category, and it's obviously not a downtown-style building. I think the building generally fits for where it is, and what they want it to be. To me, it doesn't make sense to make them do, you know, something very much outside of that, and I think they've done a nice job of making the front of the building look nice with the box, and they've got some windows and some transparency there, facing Bo's Road. So, that concludes the site plan portion, do you want to stop?
Yeah, let's stop and ask the commissioners if they have any questions at this point, and then we'll just kind of go through the site plan review, start at the top there. And I'll open it up, any commissioners want to make a comment first, and otherwise, we'll just kind of go down through the list here. Is that okay? Okay. Obviously, the site plan review, the dimensional requirements, they're fine, there is no problem, and the lighting, we've already noted that they need to come up with the lighting plan, and that the poles can't be, can not be higher than 20 foot, is that correct?
Yes.
And that, that I believe goes through the zoning officer, correct?
Correct, so, it's, I mean, this is something that we would just address as a condition, if you want to require a full four-dimensional plan, that's, I guess, up to you, I don't have major concerns that there's going to be shining lights on surrounding properties, but typically, what we like to see is that when you're at the property line, those, the parking lot lights aren't going to be casting any of the neighboring property, so to see less than one foot candle at the property lines on all sides except for the streets, I doubt it's going to be.
So, we can simply do this as a condition of approval?
Yes.
Any questions, everybody okay? Parking, I think we've heard some of the proposals here, and I think obviously, if moving into that back area there and adding parking spaces as well as an island, do we need two islands back there?
Well, you need one for each 12 parking spaces, so if they actually add the additional eight, then they would need a third island, because they would have a total of 39 spaces, so that would require three islands, they have one right now. If they add, you know, if they add islands, and they'll be taking up spaces, so they'll have to, I don't care how it works out, but we just have to make sure that there's the 39 spaces accounted for, either, some can be deferred, and then, if they defer them, then would only require the islands for what they actually have constructed and paved.
Which would be two.
Which would be two at this time, yes, so.
So, the object here would be to add eight parking spaces and one island into that back area.
Right now, they have one, they would have to add two, is what you're saying, right?
Right.
Yeah, so we have to add additional.
Right, right.
And then, it's kind of confusing right now, because they've got, they have 31 spaces shown.
Yeah, right.
And so, if they, if they add the, to get to 39, and on the north side of the building, then they would need two more islands, so for a total of three.
If they, if they put the islands in the corner of the back where they're proposing the eight parking spots, in the corners of the, that would satisfy a necessity, right?
Yep.
Like they do on the front corner?
Yeah. Right.
So, I think, I think we can safely agree that eventually here, they need to show an additional eight parking spaces and two islands.
Two additional, yeah.
And is that, is that everybody's assumptions at this point? Yes, sir?
All right, just talking to Neil here, is it, when you say 12 parking spaces, is it 12 in a row? Because there, that sort is kind of confusing.
Yeah, because I see you went from the 12, and then you have a house.
Yeah, I mean, the ordinance just says that for any parking lot that has more than 12 spaces.
Total.
Thou shall have one island for each 12, so it doesn't, it doesn't strictly tell you where they have to be, or how the parking lot has to be, because sometimes, like yours, they're, they come out different shapes, they're not, they're not always perfect squares.
So, does the one out by Bo's Road, when they come in the driveway, is that counted as an island? I mean, it sounds like a couple of the islands are coincidental.
Well, we've got a lot of, put a corner one in the back, the one in the front should count too.
Well, the one on the front, we counted as the, as the frontage landscaping that's required.
Right, so they, you can't double it up.
Yeah, that's the way we've worked that in the past, is that. So, everything in the front, we consider to be the required frontage landscaping, is one tree and three shrubs per 20 feet of frontage, so they're good with that. But, yeah, our, the way that we've applied this in the past is that, and that doesn't double up, they count also as parking lot.
Andy, could we, could we, could they also do equivalent landscaping?
Yes.
In other words, around the perimeter, maybe all around that back, back there, instead of an island?
Yeah, I mean, they don't, yeah, the ordinance does allow for that, and, I mean, I don't want them putting in trees in some crazy place just for the sake of doing it. To satisfy this criteria, so if there's, if there's a more reasonable place near the front, if, I mean, if it's possible, on the, on the east side of the building, towards the front, where it's going to be more visible perhaps, that would be fine with me. There is some wiggle room there, so, I mean, it's kind of up to you, you can require something specific, or if you just want to, you know, prove something with conditions that, you know, myself and staff will take care of it, then you can do that.
I guess I still would propose that we have a minimum of eight parking spaces added, and one island, or say, two islands, or the equivalent of trees, or bushes.
Yeah, however they want to divide it up.
However they want to divide it up, doesn't matter to us, and we can have Andy and staff go from there, just put it down as a condition. I think that, it gives them flexibility in design.
Yeah.
They can decide how they want to do it. The existing island on the parking lot as shown, I think, should stay, because it does divide that up, and it just kind of makes some sense. So, I think the consensus would be towards the back of adding eight and two islands, or however they want to divide that up as far as trees go.
But, I split it out in the back, would they have to relocate the dumpster then, too, or would they put it some in that area?
That would be up to them. I, you know, there's, they've already said that they would be willing to extend it further back, you know, the paved part, so they can do that if they want, or they could put in deferred spots back there, you know, they don't necessarily have to pave it. So, I think those are some of the decisions that they can make as a design group. I think it would make some sense, maybe, as long as they're paving, that to go ahead and pave it, put them in, and be done with. But, that's, that's somewhat that decision.
Do you have a question?
Yeah. Right now, we show a curb along the back of that parking lot on the north elevation. If we were to extend this parking lot out further to the additional spaces, does it have to be a paved lot, or can it be a gravel lot, and that curb goes away, or?
If it's going to be a, I mean, that's where it's kind of up to you, so if it's going to be something that's going to be regularly used as parking, then it'd have to be paved. But, the ordinance does allow for deferred parking, where you don't do anything, you don't even have to improve it right now, but you have to show on the site plan that you've provided for the 39, even when you don't need them. Then, if you do need them at some point, you have a spot available where you can then make that improvement.
Well, we could extend that asphalt far enough to get the parking lot, the spots that they need, not the deferred ones so much?
Yeah, so if you.
That how it ends in there?
Yeah.
So, the curb doesn't have to be at the back, you don't need that, you don't need the curb together in the back?
I don't think so, you know, I don't think it's necessary.
Well, then it would be our intention to move the west island a bit forward, add another island in the middle of the west side, equally spacing, and then put one on the west, northwest corner, so that it's a visually.
Yeah, visually appealing.
Appealing way to do it. We want it to look right, so not offset, just stick something in the back because we have it.
Yeah, and I would, I would prefer you not do that.
We wouldn't, we don't want that.
We wouldn't, we don't want that either. I mean, that, the object is, is to make it look inviting for your customers, and to make sure that there's, you know, there's some green space in there at least. So I think, I think that's, would be totally acceptable.
Yeah.
From our standpoint. Yeah, I, I would say that we can include that, as part of the condition. I still think that the decision has to be, though, in our condition, is that we have to allow the zoning officers here to oversee that, and to make sure that we get two more islands and eight more parking spaces, that's what it amounts to. Reclamation would be what you just said, I mean, that certainly would make some sense. Correct, commissioners?
Yeah.
So if we, I go to submit this print for permit, and Neil, would you maybe redraw this site plan to reflect what we discussed today?
Yes. Okay. That takes care of both the landscaping's, because the landscaping portion of it was, was met, what they have, so we're okay there. And then the question on signage is still there, the ground sign, it's not a question in the ground sign at all.
Ground sign is great.
Commissioners, what's your thoughts on, on the signs on the building?
I was thinking on the north and the south side is what we're still bringing up.
Right. They were going to add parking spots out back, that that would allow them to put the sign on, on the other side, and that meets everything that, that we need to do.
Yeah, I mean, I think if they do that, they have to put the signs so they're connected, like it is on the car.
Right.
And that also couldn't exceed fifty square feet.
Second, good with you guys?
Absolutely.
We're doing the north and the south.
It's the south.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. That brings us to the site plan review standards. A, use, use this proposal not adversely affect public health, safety, or welfare. Does anybody have any comments on that? I see absolutely nothing here that, I believe the standard has been met.
Pretty straightforward.
All in favor? Okay. B, safe, convenient, uncongestive, and well-defined pedestrian and vehicular circulation, and ingress and egress points within the site, and again, I believe that those are all compliant. Any, any questions or discussion? Okay. C, the arrangement of public or private vehicular or pedestrian connections to existing or planned streets in the area shall be planned, and again, the applicant is proposing one egress point. The only question is, an existing sidewalk crosses the furniture of the property within the right-of-way, subject to curve-cut approval from the Department of Public Works, the planning commission would find that the standard is met.
Correct.
So is that part of the normal, when they go through all public utilities and all those kinds of things, that's just part of that, correct?
The, the cut. Yeah, I mean, the city has to approve location in prior ways, am I understanding that?
From Bruce?
Yeah.
The, I know we talked about the sidewalk, from the existing sidewalk to the building, and I still think that is something that we should have driven, because that is a, there's a bike path out there on Bowles Road currently, and, you know, the trail system's going to be coming through there, just be seen to me, and people do walk in town, you guys know that, they walk to and from your building all the time, drop a car, pick it up. I just think it'd be nicer to have the sidewalk coming down and tying in, instead of having your customer walk out in your driveway to, you know...
To be able to get out to the path?
Or to...
For the sidewalk.
Right, or to walk to...
Right. Because there is a park right across the street here, it's fairly close.
Yep.
And are you looking at that sidewalk in any particular...
Yeah, I'm actually right in front of, where the, where you're showing the sidewalk, or the...
Measurements?
Coming around.
All the numbers are?
Where all the numbers are in front of the handicap spot.
Right.
You know, just, that, I think that'd make an ideal spot, it's going down right between all your, your green space now.
Almost looks like a sidewalk.
It does, yeah.
Is that wide enough then, from where that first handicap parking is to the building to onset that, so they get to the front door? I don't know what that, that small width is, to get outside and get up to the front doors?
It's...
So I don't know what that, what's that?
It's four foot four.
It is?
Yep, it's right there in the corner.
Oh, I see now, yeah.
And I think our sidewalks are about five foot.
Five is typical.
Five, standard.
Well, let's include that as a condition, then, let's make the sidewalk right foot, as long as it's standard. And we stand it all the way around, it'll come right in. So we want to add that as a condition.
So, so then, would you look at the center as your handicap ramp to get to the sidewalk, to get into the building, to meet that, or is that just all level around it without any curb? It looks like there's a curb around there.
Yeah, and they're showing their curb down.
Yeah.
Right in front.
Right in front, yeah. Well, the appropriate curving would have to be...
Right, so could they do away with that down curve there, and come up to the sidewalk and utilize that, so, I mean, it's up to you guys for design purposes.
Yeah, it would seem logical.
We can certainly do that.
As long as the four foot four is wide enough for a handicap sidewalk.
Right. Yeah, I don't know, we'd have to, I'm not sure.
Well, even if...
I mean, they might be able to make that...
Even if you had to bump that up six inches, and...
Right.
And move the handicap spot six inches, I mean, that's all we're really looking at, is a, is a small thing, I would think.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Marty. Removal or alteration of natural features, obviously, this plan versus what is there now, is a huge improvement over what, what is there now.
The vacant field.
All right, so I believe that the condition has been met, and any discussion there? Okay. The satisfactory assurance shall be provided that the requirements of all are applicable ordinance disclosed in requirements of the city are below what we meant. This will be, obviously, a condition of approval, where they have to do that anyway, so that's, that's all there. And the general purpose, spirit of this ordinance and the comprehensive plans, they will shall be maintained. Master plan indicates that the subject property is located within mixed use, and I think we've discussed that, that this is absolutely perfect for that location. Any discussion there? And I think that goes through all of the standards of site plan that we have.
I have one more question.
Sure.
You're putting your dumpster in the back, and you didn't propose putting a dumpster enclosure around it. If you did, I didn't see it anywhere on your print. Is that something you were planning on doing?
We call it a privacy screen with gates.
Okay.
And another question, were you guys planning on moving that, right now, behind your building, you got a container with tires? Does that get moved over there too? Probably look better, because you don't want... I just wonder if it's going to go back and...
Probably not that one, it'd probably be a better looking one.
Okay. I don't think that'll, that'll make the move. Our goal is not to have tires put moisture in, because it feeds mosquitoes, so...
Good catch. Anything else? Anybody else? Then let's move on to the special land use standards, please, Andy.
As you guys know, with special land uses, there, the ordinance calls out in every zoning district, permitted uses and special uses. Permitted uses are rated by right, basically, special land uses are uses that require a little bit higher scrutiny, because depending on where they are, and a bunch of other factors, they may or may not be compatible with what's around them, so because of that, there, there's a little bit higher standard that we have to review those with, and that's why there's a public hearing and things like that, so if there were objections from neighbors, or questions, that they would be able to be notified, and we could deal with them. So there's a handful of standards in the ordinance, just four, I think. They talk about the standards that need to be met by the proposed use, and I'll just review those. The first one says that needs to be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained, so it has to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and that it will not change the essential character of the area. Some of these are kind of similar to the site plan review standards that we've been through, again, we, we think this is going to be a huge improvement to that, to that site, it fits in reasonably well with the surrounding uses. It's well landscaped, generally, everything looks, looks great, so, you know, I think that's a standard that, that is met, in my opinion. The second one says will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services, such as highways, streets, police fires, and so on and so forth. The location is good, there, there, it seems to be perfectly accessible to everything and everybody, they're tying into the city storm system. You know, street access is good, our protection to me looks good, although we can certainly have the Department take a look at that, and I think that is a condition of approval, the dumpster is in a accessible location, and all of that. So I think that standard is met. And three talks about not creating excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services. We don't anticipate this generating a huge number of emergency services, or utility services, or anything like that from the city, so I think that that standard is met. And the last one says will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, and so forth, that will be detrimental to persons' property or the general welfare, the reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, flare, or odors. Again, I don't think, it'll generate traffic, obviously, I don't think it'll generate excessive amount of traffic, that there will be noise, probably, I don't think it'll be excessive, because everything, like you said, is inside, and there's only a limited number of overhead doors, and every, and because it's all inside, it's going to contain most of those negative impacts, so you have to be within the building, so we don't have major concerns there, so generally, generally, we feel that that standard is met as well, and those are the only standards there are, so I guess, Bruce, I don't know if you want to review those, which is Commission Two, are we getting the big conditions?
Well, let's, let's just ask the commissioners, does anybody have any questions on any of these standards?
Yeah, I got one.
Okay.
Uh, you're, the oil separator, same.
Number four?
Yes. Andy, do we have a, does, do we have a certain gallon size that has to be put in for mown bays, or is it...
It's not from a zoning perspective, I don't know if there's a building, you know, building code or building standard that, I honestly don't know. I mean, nothing in the ordinance, it isn't that, so I don't know yet.
That's a little bit out of our reach.
Oh, oh, yeah, I mean, we could certainly, if you wanted, as a condition to have, you know, we can obviously verify that it's adequate, and it meets whatever, if there are standards or, you know, minimum sizes, or anything, we can take a look at that, make sure that it's sufficient, but...
Well, that need to be checked anyways, in order to get a building permit?
Presumably, but I am not...
We have a five hundred gallon oil separator, so it's a pretty good size.
That's a butt of oil changes, so...
These guys are deep, though, they don't spill that. They run a profitable water center.
Any other commissioners? Andy, let's go on to the recommendations and the conditions.
Sure. So, based on our conversation tonight, we have to add and/or modify a few of these. The first three, four really are standard conditions that we put on everything, so no demolition or earthwork shall be undertaken until a building permit has been issued, consistent with the site plan approval. Number two, prior to the issuance of any permits, the applicant shall have paid an application permit, escrow, and other fees related to the request. Three, applicant shall maintain all required state, federal, and local permits. Number four, applicant shall comply with all stipulations of the fire department, and all other applicable emergency personnel regarding emergency vehicle access to the site. Number five, this is getting into the ones that we may need to modify slightly, number five says, the applicant shall comply with the standard of nineteen oh six regarding parking lot landscaping, and submit an amended landscaping plan for review by the zoning enforcement officer. Maybe that's good enough, based on what we've talked about here, but if you want to specify, you know, shall add X number of spaces on the north side of the building, and so on and so forth.
I think as we, as we indicated, let's add eight spaces, and two islands. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Everybody's good with that? And that can be followed into five here.
Didn't we say, though, that they could suggest an alternate to the islands with landscaping in the back?
Yes, yes, yes.
That should be fine.
Okay, yeah, let's add that. Add eight spaces and two islands, or alternate landscaping. Can you include that as part of five, and then make that separate?
No, I'll include it as, as part of five, so I'm reading out, hold on just a second here, I'll make this down, so I can bring it back to you. So what five will say is, so the first sentence will stay the same, the applicant shall comply with the standards of nineteen oh six regarding parking lot landscaping, and submit an amended landscaping plan for review by a city zoning enforcement officer. The applicant shall add eight spaces and two landscaping islands, or equivalent landscaping elsewhere on the site, subject to the zoning enforcement officer's approval.
That, that gives them some flexibility as to where they want to put them.
Yeah.
And again, our recommendation was to do it along, you know, the space amount as you go, and that, that certainly seems the best situation, but if something else, you know, works out better, that's something you guys can work out.
Right, and, I mean, the ordinance allows for minor deviations, and after, after it's approved, so if they come back and your building is adjusted slightly, or parking is tweaked here and there, that's something that we could handle administratively, and we do it all the time, to be honest with you, so... Number six says that the applicant shall submit letting details to be reviewed and approved by the city zoning enforcement officer, and that primarily deals with the type of fixtures, if you want to, do you want to include a photometric plan as part of that requirement?
I don't think it's necessary, do you?
No. Okay. So that one can say is, is, number seven, we can probably strike, based on our amendment number five, so, so number seven currently says, the applicant shall submit an amended site plan, which shows the first parking at the roof of the site, so it has to meet any of the parking requirements as permitted in section nineteen oh five, or reviewed by a city zoning enforcement officer.
If we delete number seven, the way it is now, let's put in the sidewalk in front in its place. So we'll delete seven, as is, because we've already addressed that up above, and then we'll add in the sidewalk up, up front. And that should take in the curb, and, you know, all those kinds of issues at the same time, whatever, because of the handicap parking is right there, you want to make sure it's a smooth flow, and that's, that's what Neil will do.
So this condition will now say, the applicant shall provide a sidewalk connection to the sidewalk along Bowles Road.
Correct.
Yep. Then, number eight, the applicant shall obtain a sign permit from the city prior to installing any signage on the site. They're painting them on there, they don't need a permit for that, I don't think, but we will, we'll have to, we'll have to verify that they meet the square footage requirements in their design and everything, so we can probably modify this, just to say that the, you know, signage shall be reviewed by the zoning enforcement officer prior to placement.
Is that some, okay with everybody? Okay, yes, and we've, we've talked about it with them, so they, they don't get that That way it'll be easier to sort of...
And that concludes what I have for conditions, I don't, do you want to add something about us checking on the oil? us checking on the oil separator or are you comfortable with, with the?
My concern on, on that part of it is the emergency vehicle access, I understand that's important too, but to, how do we notify the, the fire department hazardous flammable materials that when they drive up, if, if it is a five hundred gallon tank and, and we're giving them as much notice as possible of content in the building, is that something the city goes out and looks at, is the fire department comes by, so when they respond, their first responders go there, they feel safe and, you know.
They know it's there.
Yeah, exactly, versus here's five hundred gallons go up.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't know how it's, those are the plan.
They take, it takes water and it separates out the way that it's piped in and the oil will float to the top which they'll skim off every now and yet. And then sand, the heavier sand drops to the bottom, basically it just separates out the two and it sends the water out, so there's, if there's a half inch of earth on top, that's, that's a lot, I mean.
Not like it's.
I would scold these a little bit.
But Jim, you bring, you bring a good point, I mean, any hazardous material that is there, obviously there is oil stored there and other things, tires, et cetera. Um, and a question, I, I, and I, I've raised this question before and I guess I'll continue to raise it, is we want to make sure that the fire department inspects and, and does all of those kinds of issues and I think, I think that's covered here. But I, I just want to reaffirm that and this happens to be one more piece of this, uh, that is a little unusual. So the question is, is how do we confer that or convey that information to the fire department? Is that a fair, yeah, I mean, I'm not sure how that works.
Yeah, I mean, what, so what we can do with, they'll, I mean, they're going to need to make a few adjustments to the site plan based on, on this conversation, what your conditions are going to be. So once, once we receive that, we can provide them with a copy of, of, of the site plan and ask if they take a look at it. If, if they look at it and they're good with everything, then that's fine, they can say so, we can consider that condition met if they have additional questions or requirements or, uh, they want them to move something or provide additional details or whatever, then we can.
I, I don't know if the building is required to be sprinkled or anything now, like the ordinance is.
I don't think it's big enough to be sprinkled, it's, I forget what the number is for sprinkled, but it's.
It's twelve thousand.
That's what I was thinking too, yeah.
We currently have a fifty gallon and it, one of our environmental, comes when it's needed and I think it's every five years. That's how little.
That's your oil separator, fifty gallons?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is ten times bigger, yeah.
And it only has to be cleaned every five years.
Yeah.
So.
So you're going, it'll be a safer building, yeah.
There won't be any oil on the floor.
As long as you keep him out of the food shop.
My guy, my car, and you'll have oil on it.
No, the, the fire department is, is our question, it, it, it's not your, your problem in the lead, it's, it's, it's how we, how is that message conveyed to the fire department so that they're not put in peril? And that's the whole idea behind it and, you know, obviously it helps your shop because they know you're safe too and that's, that's what everybody wants. Any other?
Uh, no, I have nothing for you.
So, um. Commissioners, any, uh, any thoughts at this point on the, um, sorry about that, on the special land use standards and conditions? I would then entertain, uh, a motion for, um, the site plan, uh, review and special land use standards uh, with the conditions that we have. Somebody would make that, please? And do we have a second?
I'll send.
And discussion. Sue, would you do a roll call, roll for us, please?
Commissioner Edwaller?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioners Zanstron?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerard?
Yes.
Commissioner Salzweidel?
Yes.
Commissioner Tealander?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes. Congratulations. You have your, uh, standards and everything is met, uh, you have a little homework obviously, but, uh, welcome and it's nice to have you here, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Commissioners, we can, uh, stand adjourned for just one second though, we do have a special meeting scheduled for Monday, April three concerning the bikes and sidewalk. Uh, it'll be right here, right Sue?
Yes.
Dinner is going to be served, um, so come prepared. I will send you, um, some things out of the master plan that affect sidewalks particularly. So you'll get that in the next couple of days. Uh, and then we also have our regular meeting scheduled again for April tenth because we will have a site plan review. Uh, we do have a site plan review, so we're, we're just simply put back on the April tenth meeting that we never really took off. So, just to be alert though because it is spring break time, so, so everybody knows. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Stand adjourned, thank you very much.